Good evening, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order. Regular Apple Valley Unified School District Board Meeting on August 14, 2025 at 5:00 PM. Welcome. So we'll start off with call to order and roll call. Amanda Buchanan.
Here.
Maria Okpara.
Here.
Renee Longshore.
Here.
And Anita Tucker.
Here.
And I'm here as well. So if everybody could please rise. And Amanda, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
All right, right hand of your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item four for the closed session, public comments. Do we have some cards?
We have three tonight pertaining to closed session.
Okay, great. First up is J.C. Scott. And remind...
All right, we're good? Okay. Good evening, President Sabers, members of the board, Superintendent Nelson, district cabinet, members of Avuda, members of the audience, and most importantly, my brothers and sisters at the California School Employees Association. My name is J.C. Scott, and I am the proud president of CSEA Chapter 828, Apple Valley. Welcome back from summer break. I hope you all found some rest and reflection because this year we're not easing into anything. Right out of the gate, I am extremely disappointed but not surprised by the same dysfunctional and political theater that has plagued this district for far too long. I was disturbed, as well as many of the numerous members who called me saying, "Did you see that board meeting?" Thirty-seven, to be exact, to witness the childishness, childishness, not just between board members, but also from the superintendent herself. The public accusations of bullying are not only unprofessional, they're embarrassing. We are all adults in this room. Our students, our staff, and our community expect and deserve better. How can asking questions for clarity be considered bullying? First, let me be absolutely clear. The superintendent is not in charge of publicly elected school board members. She is their subordinate. She takes direction from there, not the other way around. Time and time again, we watch the board rubber stamp her decisions with little discussion or oversight. This needs to stop, and it needs to stop now. We need leadership, not submission. We need governance, not showmanship. This is what you were elected to do. This year, CSEA is demanding fiscal accountability, accountability for violence against staff, ethical conduct at all levels of the district leadership, and meaningful transparent negotiations with labor partners. Let's talk about negotiations. The current process has been at times disrespectful, dismissive, and frankly, an insult to the hardworking classified staff in the district. When CSEA presents a proposal, we expect one of two things, an acceptance or a fair and reasonable counteroffer. What we will not accept is silence, stalling, or bad faith. This isn't a game. These are real people, real jobs and real lives being affected. We are not here to be ignored. We are not here to be discarded. We're here to negotiate. And we demand that the board give clear direction to the district's bargaining team. No more hiding behind "we need direction from the board" nonsense. We do not negotiate with the board. And if it is the district's need minute by minute for guidance, maybe the board should be at the table to save time and act in good faith. Because having us meet with the team that cannot make these decisions is an act of bad faith, and we are prepared to move to purb if necessary. So give a clear direction and do it as soon as possible because we are literally losing invaluable staff in droves. No more empty platitudes. If you want labor peace, it starts with respect at the bargaining table. If there are set parameters, or at least the best final offer, bring it to the table so we can move on. It shouldn't be a guessing game. How about providing a real explanation of why the district does not want to give CSEA a permanent equity clause, AKA me-too language, or compensation? If you haven't already seen the unity, our relationship and collaboration efforts between CSEA and Avuda have never been stronger because we stand united in the same purpose, our people and our pupils. Now let's turn to a major concern that directly questions this district's ethics and judgments. It's come to their attention that an attorney who legally, who has legally had involvement with a sitting board member was brought in at the request of the superintendent. This is alarming. It raises serious and legitimate questions. Is this a conflict of interest where there is bias? Were public funds misused for personal vendettas? Was this fully disclosed to the board and to the public? This is about more than poor optics. This is about public trust. Taxpayer dollars should not be used to bring in individuals with personal or legal ties to the district employees that may have questionable motives. CSEA demands a full explanation and review of this decision, and we do so on behalf of our community. If nothing improper has occurred, you should have no issue being transparent about it. During the 2024-2025 school year, our classified and certificated staff members continue to face violence and unsafe working conditions with little to no accountability, despite our continued efforts to protect them by informing this school board, asking education code be enforced when it comes to discipline. No more silence, no more indifference. If you're not prepared to protect the workers who keep your schools running, then you're not here to serve your students or your staff. You are here with your own agenda. And let me say this as plainly as I can. CSEA has a new sheriff in town. Despite the attempts to attack me personally by trying to discredit me and drag my name through the mud, I'm still standing. I'm not going anywhere because I stand firm in my commitment to not only advocate for my members, but also for the community that we love and that I love, which includes everyone from district employees, that's my classified members and the teachers, my students, my local businesses, and the institutions that we all rely on every day. We are committed to this movement that we built, and the question you should be asking yourselves, are you here to work with us or against us? I hope it is to work with us for the betterment of everyone involved. CSEA will continue to stand united with Avuda, with their community, and with everyone who values equity, honesty, and respect for our workers. And if certain board members refuse to work with us in good faith, we will organize and we will lobby, and we will support candidates that will do this for us and that will do right for their community, who recognize the value in all of us and not just those at the top. Enough is enough. This year, we want and expect better. And this year, the district will be held accountable, even if we have to pack this group with every CSEA member and every community member in the high desert every single month. We will do that. But will it be in protest, or will this be in celebration of accomplishment and goals that benefit us all? I am hoping for the best, and I hope you feel the same way, too, because we are depending on you to do the right thing. It's time, Apple Valley Unified. This is way past due in solidarity, President J.C. Scott.
Okay, up next is Karen Sabers.
Welcome back, everyone. Good evening, Superintendent Nelson, board members, President Scott, audience, and members of the community. My name is Karen Sabers. I am the president of Avuda, and I am here tonight representing the certificated staff of this district who have now been working without a contract for 45 days. Before I speak on where we are now, I want to go back to the June 5th board meeting, specifically the budget presentation. The presentation showed a budget deficit of $25.7 million for the 24-25 school year. Back in June, back in the June 24th board meeting, just one year earlier, the projected deficit for the same year was $26.2 million, not much of a change. That same June 24th presentation showed $18.7 million in deficit spending for the 23-24 school year. And for the 25-26, what had once been projected as a positive balance of $261,000 is now shown as a $9.7 million deficit. So here's the question. With the board's fiduciary responsibility to the community, why wasn't this a crisis then? Did no one see this coming, or did it only become a problem once positions started being cut and classrooms began to feel the impact? Was the board not well-informed, or did the district not provide the necessary information to recognize where we were headed? This is not a rhetorical question. It's a real one. Because we've been in this financial crisis for seven months, and we still don't have clarity. We still don't know how we got here, and more importantly, how we're going to make sure this doesn't happen again. It's not a generic situation because it's not happening everywhere also. It's distinct to our district. I also want to stress that we appreciate the questions that are being asked by some of the board members because we welcome transparency. But seven months in, we're still looking for answers that haven't been shared. And while we're here, let's talk about the savings that the district could be seeing. Has the board been informed of how much is being saved by the certificated staff who have moved from Kaiser and onto a less expensive insurance plan? Or how much was saved from the, I believe, 47 veteran certificated staff who retired, replaced by new staff, who we do appreciate, but whose cost to the district is likely $60,000 to $80,000 less per person? Those are real dollars, and where are those going? Because they're not going towards retaining our current certificated staff. Quite a few have resigned, and if you ask any teacher in this room, any staff in this room, more would have left for surrounding districts if there had been openings. Unfortunately, many of those districts are fully staffed, and because they're paying better, and they're retaining their high-quality teachers and staff. In our final negotiation session last year, we were told there's no money. There is no direction from this board regarding salary numbers or even the dollars available to work with. And now we're facing another hit. Starting in January, insurance premiums, yes, we're facing another hit. Starting in January...
Karen, can I interrupt you just for a second? We are limited to three minutes.
I'm almost done.
I let J.C. go for a while. If you could just...
I'm winding up.
I'm gonna let you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Insurance premiums are going up. Since there has been no direction or action from the board after May revise, our staff is going to be left to take on that increase themselves. That means, come January, staff in this district will be bringing home less each month. Let that sink in. Less to take home, less take-home pay in the middle of a cost-of-living crisis in a district that is already paying less than those around us. Meanwhile, this situation is impacting classrooms directly. Teachers are being told there's less money for supplies, some by even as much as 25%, and some have not received the basic supplies like pencils. We're cutting corners on the back of staff and students, and it's unacceptable. Our staff and students deserve better. We cannot continue to operate the district where every neighboring district pays more. We cannot keep losing great educators. We cannot continue to work under the weight of the crisis while no one has explained how we got here or how we can prevent this from happening again. It's time for direction. It's time to start valuing the people in this room and the students we serve before this district loses even more of what makes this district great. Thank you in solidarity, Karen.
Okay, and then we have another speaker, Stephen Cobb.
I'll try to, I'll keep mine short. I hope you guys all had a great summer. I looked eager after we did negotiations last year. I stood up here last year and said I was a nobody representing a bunch of people, and I kind of take that back. I'm a somebody with a lot of somebodies. I was eager to get back because I work with a great group of people, teachers, counselors, administrators, everybody on campus are just fantastic, and I came back with that. But Leslie McNanley retired. I heard she's watching tonight, so I'm gonna, you know, have that. But they left on to me being the lead negotiator. And so coming out of that last meeting, I realized coming back after the summer, my role was going to be something to not have good news for people and to step in a room and try to have some strong, large shoulders to burden that. And I'm okay with that, taking that. But again, coming into our last board meeting and then going into the negotiation session, I was really disappointed when we came in and all of a sudden we just sat across from somebody and said there was nothing to even talk about to really offer into that room. And so as I come into this year, I'm kind of excited for what could happen for our district because I'm a lifer here on this, as soon as when we moved up here. My kids are from here. I said that before. But the goal is to be a district that holds, retains, hires, and brings in good people. And we can only do that with the direction. And so I think what I'm asking tonight is for the board to step up and all of you up there to step up and to give us something that we can either talk about or turn down. But when we weren't even offered that, that was the disappointment. And so I'll just kind of end with there because I don't really know what else to say that takes us any further except have the shoulders to do the job, to give us something so that we can make this the best place of what it was. And I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Okay, Kylie, is there any other cards for the session?
Not pertaining to closed session.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you to the speakers for your comments. We will be going into closed session, but before that, I need to read out what we're going in for. And then we'll be back at 7:00, 7:00 PM sharp. So number one, pupil personnel, annual review cases AR 125-26 through AR 525-26. Two, conference on litigation, government code section 54956.9 subsection A. Current litigation, eight cases, CIVSB 22203032314073, 2322171241235924126872321161, CIVVS 2400289 and 2500223. Government code section 5495.5 subsection C and 54.956.9 subsection D and two. And E1, anticipated litigation, one case, 2024-2501. Item three, public employee discipline dismissal, release, reassignment, transfer, and leave title-certificated and classified employees. Item four, public employee appointment, resignation, retirement, reduction, title-certificated classified employees. Item five, conference with labor negotiator. A, agent negotiator, Kristin Dupree. B, employee organization, California School Employees Association. Six, conference with labor negotiator, agency negotiator, Trainee Nelson, employee organization unrepresented. Seven, conference with real property negotiator, government code 54956.8, negotiation party, Matthew Schulenberg, Apple Valley Unified School. And finally, eight, security matters, government code section 54957, consultation with Apple Valley Unified School District Chief of Police. So we have a new system here that we're going to try out tonight, which is electronic voting. So we'll need... Kylie?
Really, really fast. There was a script...
Okay.
...transposure right there. So B5 is conference with labor negotiator, agency negotiator is going to be Jeremiah Harrison, employee organization, Apple Valley Unified Teachers Association. Item B6 is going to be conference with labor negotiator, agency negotiator, Kristin Dupree, employee organization, California School Employees Association.
Okay, great. Thank you. So when it shows on your screen, you can, I'll ask for a motion to go into close, and then we'll try this out. So do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Go move.
Second.
A second? Anita? Okay, there you go. You can vote right there. You have to push hard on the key.
Let's see. Looks like I'm waiting for two more to submit.
I don't have the little box.
Or you don't have a box to check?
I am. I put the tippy top, but it says login. Because it crashed on me, and I had to re-log in when I went back to it, even though I had logged in already. I might be on the outside. I was so hopeful.
No, it looks so good.
So who's it? Who's the other one?
No, that.
I think it's just Anita's vote hasn't processed yet.
Oh.
Here's what.
Go to login.
Oh, okay. Is it my...
I think Pat's helped. I think she was having to log back in.
Yeah, mine like all of a sudden disappeared. And then when I want to ask you about this ticket, it was...
Kylie, we don't need to take these in. We're not giving any...
That was my error, somehow.
I noticed that when I was going through it, and I thought...
When I heard it, I was like, wait, what? So I must have noticed that one.
Okay, Anita, we'll just take a voice from you.
Do you vote yes for going in close?
Uh, aye.
Okay, we're good. We'll be back at 7:00 PM, anybody.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I got the thumbs up. We're live. We're back in open session at seven eleven on the evening. So with that, we will call the meeting order, which I just did. We'll do a roll call real quick. Amanda Buchanan.
Here.
Maria O'Car.
Here.
Renee Longshore.
Here.
Anita Tucker.
Here.
I'm here as well. If you could all please join me and face the flag and we'll pledge allegiance. Ready, begin.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will move on to board member comments. First up for the new year will be Anita.
Good afternoon. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to all our students and families as we begin a new school year. And I'd also like to sincerely thank our dedicated teachers, classified staff and administrators who have been working tirelessly to ensure everything is in place for a smooth and successful start. We know there's only one first day of school and it's our priority to make sure every student feels safe, supported and excited to learn. I hope everyone had a chance to rest and recharge over the summer. Our staff certainly use the time well, preparing classrooms, planning lessons and creating welcoming environments for all our students. This summer, I had the opportunity to attend the Safe and Civil Schools Training alongside Ms. Sabers and Mr. Slosser. It was incredible and insightful to learn more about this important program and how it's being implemented across Apple Valley Unified School District. I truly appreciate the work our teachers and staff are doing to support positive school culture and consistent, effective, disciplined practices. Programs like this help to foster both academic success and a sense of belonging for our students. And I truly thank you. This year, I'm doing a long-term subposition after retiring for three years in middle school, seventh grade, math and science, which is not my area. And I was so tired the first day. So I relate with all of you. And thank you for all you do. I was also honored to be able to represent Apple Valley Unified School District at several events this summer, including the opening of the new athletic field at Victor Valley College and also an award ceremony honoring Dr. Nayer. And these occasions are a wonderful reminder of the strong partnerships that support our educational community. One of the highlights of my summer was meeting our new teachers during their orientation and having the chance to join them for lunch. We've welcomed some outstanding educators to our district along with the outstanding ones that we have and our classified staff. And I'm excited to see the impact our new teachers will have in the classroom. Thank you to Mrs. Nelson for organizing such a warm welcome and to Ms. Sabers and Avuda for inviting me to speak during the luncheon on during the training. Your efforts to support our new teachers helped set the tone for a positive and successful year. I was also truly honored to participate in the backpack distribution event for our students and families. Seeing the joy on the students' faces as they picked out their backpacks was incredibly heartwarming and it was a beautiful reminder of why we do this work. As we begin this new academic year, I hope it brings growth, learning and a continued sense of unity within our school and community. Thank you so much.
Renee. Longshore.
Well, I hope you all had a lovely summer break, enjoying time with your family and friends. Maybe you had the chance to try something new, maybe read a good book that you were meaning to get to or finally start that project that had been an idea for far too long. Thank you to our grounds people who worked tirelessly to get our campuses ready for the start of school, to the teachers who masterfully crafted a classroom environment that both welcomed and cultivated learning this year for the beginning and I'm sure it's going to continue throughout for our students, to our many other classified and certified site and district personnel and administrators that work with both great heart and skill to prepare to meet the needs of each and every student and family in our district. The work you do is appreciated and has made for a very smooth beginning to the 25-26 school year. I would like to thank Apple Valley Church of Nazarene who collected school supplies and backpacks and donated them to our students and those who showed up to pass them out. Like many of you, I enjoyed the time off. Outside of attending some public events and a budget perspectives workshop, I am excited for what's next. I've had some time to reflect and think forward, organize my study and collect back-to-school supplies. Yes, I am one of those. I'm also very excited to complete the fourth and my final Masters in Governance course this Saturday in Visalia. I hope for all, my hope for all as we begin this school year is that you find something worth investing in. Take steps towards a new hobby or a profession, even if it's something you've never considered before. Find the courage to try, to say yes to possibility. I did as I campaigned to join the school board and this year, as your duly elected officials, we will continue to look at where we are as a district and where we need to be. We will consider information presented, discuss and make decisions that set the direction for AVUSD. This is not an easy thing to do. My fellow board members, when the data shows inequity across our high school campuses, we have to talk about it. When staff feels undervalued and disrespected, we need to lean in and ask why. When student learning is far below standard and stagnant, we need to reflect. This is the job we were elected to do. We asked FICMAT to look at our current state of finances, a good first step. We have many more to go. This year holds great possibilities, but progress begins with courage, with a voice that says enough. I will not take the easy road. This is worth it. In order for students to have the best opportunity, staff must feel supported. Classroom should have supplies. Both safety and provision are essential in fostering a growth mindset. So as we begin this year, let's step in purpose despite any hesitancy together. As we make decisions, let's do it in light of the facts because that is where possibility lies in us. It won't be easy, but anything worth our time and effort rarely is. When things get tough, remember to hold tightly to hope, knowing you are one day or even one breath closer to where you want to be. Every chance you get this year, aspire to show up, to show out and become the best version of yourself. Thank you.
Maria.
Good evening and welcome to this new school year. I am very excited to welcome all our new students and all our new staff members and those returning to us. Congratulations to Mrs. Adele McLean for your recognition. I am particularly excited because I've known you since when. It will not be a new year for me if I do not take the time to show my gratitude to all the people who make this very possible. I'm not one of them. You are. My special thanks to transportation staff as you are the beginning and the end of our students every day. My prayer is that you have a seamless and safe route this school year. And to our teachers and staff, they have all prepared to serve our children and for that I say thank you. Our administrative staff and counselors were at work long before the beginning of the school year to set up schedules that will work for our students and to set up our classrooms so that when they come into the classroom, it is a friendly environment and welcoming to them. During this vacation, I noticed that many took the liberty of unwinding and going on well-deserved vacations and exotic trips. I hope you are fully recharged for the tasks at hand. My wish is that we never forget that we were once children and we did not know much. Someone took care of, took care and guided us to become the adults we are now today. We are going to face many challenges along this journey and I hope we are not too hard on ourselves and to allow the word grace to always enter the room. I had the distinct pleasure of joining members of staff to give our backpacks with school supplies to our children. I thank Mrs. Torres and her team for securing the items and making sure that our children have materials in readiness for their education. I was able to go to three schools on the first day of school and to welcome our students. In the almost over, almost forty years of being in this district, thirty, I think it's thirty or forty, nineteen eighty-five. This was the very first time that I went to the opening of Apple Valley High School. Even though my five children went to Apple Valley High School, I never went to the opening because I went to my own opening as a teacher. The students were exceptionally engaged. They were polite and they were keen on getting started. For that, I must send a huge thank you to your parents and your village because we are part of the village. My second stop was to Sandia School. It was a well-oiled machine and extremely encouraging. Some parents were so anxious that they arrived one hour before they were due to arrive. The principal and staff were extremely helpful to me, even though all I had to do was to fist bump the children at the gate and have them go into their registration table. The principal was so kind to show me the new kindergarten TK classroom. I was so impressed with the classrooms that I just wanted to take my shoes off and just lay down on the carpet. Last school, last school was Yakaloma. The staff and the amazing principal, Mr. Clark, were so ready and they came in in their school colors. Once again, I visited the new buildings with Mr. Schlosser who also was there to welcome our students and families. At the end of the day, I was sure that my joy tank was overflowing. Mr. Clark was very conspicuous through this day that it was easy for me to direct new parents to him with his bright green shirt. Last school year, it was evident that we had several challenges, especially when it came to building respectful and cordial relationship. I must say that dignity does not need to bark, shout or name call. It simply stands tall. It is important to note that swimming against a current will never get us to the shore we are aiming for. I am glad that we approved the short-term funds in the event of emergency last year. When the federal government had the threat to cut off funds, we were ready to continue to cover salaries if needed. Luckily, we did not need to do so and I am happy our employees did not have to go without being paid. Having said that, I want to take a moment to share a little bit about a woman I have known for over twenty-five years. And I'm sharing this because somebody made a statement to me at the end of the last school year and that statement bothered me throughout the entire summer and I thought I should address it my first board meeting. She came to our district when I was already a fixture in this district. We shared an office and for some time also shared same support staff. In the years I have known her, she never deviated from the core values of this district, children first. I have had very many occasions where I have listened to her share her why and it always boiled down to the children. We have actually argued a lot of times and if you know me, you know I will argue. And we will even disagree a lot of times. And in most cases, I could win and in other cases, she could win. When I hear about a character of a person, I often wonder what this is meant to be and the intent. If you know me, I will defend your character if I know it and nothing will get in the way of that. But it does not change the fact that I look for the facts where it leads me. When I, I often want, I speak from a place that knows this person best, my heart. I may not always agree with her, but I know that I respect her not just as a superintendent but as a human being who has high integrity and always willing to learn what she does not know. I'll give you an example. During the riot in Chicago, I think it was Chicago, I sent her a text message that I am really troubled because I think people like me are not welcome here. And she stopped all she had to do to find me, to tell me that I was welcomed. She may not rob you the wrong way or she may not rob you the right way, but one thing is certain, she does believe in this district. God knows we have both robbed each other the very wrong way on several occasions, but one thing always heals our differences, our love for the children. If we take the time to heal our wounds, I believe this district will continue to focus on what matters. The education of our children and the care of those who do the heavy lifting is number one on my list. And you, the teachers and you, the classified, you are the ones that do the heavy lifting. And I want to be sure that you understand that no matter what happens, we will be looking out for what is best for you. But I will not, as a trustee of this board and as a member of Apple Valley and as a member of this community, stand by and watch character being assassinated. It is hard on me. I have made several requests of this superintendent and some have been granted and also some have not been granted. She always followed each with sound explanation and I have never taken them personally. Some of it, I just asked her just last week and she talked me off the ledge because I said, "You're going to do what I've asked you to do." And she says, "Ah, well, let me tell you what the board policy says." And I said, "Well, I don't care about board policy." "Well, you should care about board policy." I have accepted them because I know she continues to make the effort to be fair in all she does. I also know that uneasy lies the head that wears the crown and she is wearing the crown. You might wonder why I chose to speak on this on our first board meeting. That's because I want to go on record to state that I speak for myself and make decisions on my own. on my own as long as it works for our children, staff, and families. I also want to go on record that I will not subscribe to character assassination of any personnel. I will listen for anything, but I will not listen to anything that has to damage people's character. If I have a problem with you personally, I will let you know. And after we're done discussing it, I will let it go. I will suggest as a board, oh no, let me go back. Let us keep in mind that each of us is planting trees, the shade of which we will not sit under. Some of us will not live to see the trees we've planted. I'm in my seventies and I know that I will not see the trees I'm planting today. So let us plant good trees and nurture each other with kindness and respect. I will suggest that as a board, we honor the people who sent us here and not derail our function. The role of the governing board team is the what? And the district administration, teachers, and staff's role is the how. Together, we must work to make this a great place, a healthy environment for all. Until we get the FICMAT completed, I am of the opinion that we will not be able to give you good answers that will suit you because we must have that data in our hands to make effective decisions that will service everybody. But like I said, that's my opinion. Meanwhile, we must be laser-focused on finding ways to work with each other and laser-focused in ways that will open doors for people to talk to us, even when we disagree. I have no problem as a member of this team, and this team means I have been a teacher in Apple Valley, so you know I am part of that team. I have no problem whatsoever with a teacher coming to me and saying, "Ms. Akpara, you were wrong." And I will say, "Well, tell me what I could do differently." Because that's how we grow. And having said that, I want to wish you all the most fabulous school year and I look forward to serving each one of you and coming into your classrooms and being there to help you lift the heavy weight that you all are carrying. Thank you so much for your time.
Amanda.
All right, thank you. Good evening. It's so hard to believe we're already on day six, day eight for me as a teacher, but day six here. And I know we don't have any students with us tonight, but I know our campus is already buzzing with energy, learning, and those wonderful first-week stories. So one of my favorites that I wanted to share was a close friend of mine had her nieces just started in our district at the very end of last year. The children had moved cross-country and come to live in California with my friend, but she was so nervous for her first day because she was going to be starting kindergarten. She had never been in school and her older siblings had been kind of hit or miss in school. And so she really didn't know what to expect. And I saw the picture in the morning of them and she had this cute little first-day-of-kindergarten shirt and the big smile and the cute little pigtails. But she was nervous. And when she got home, she was so excited to share everything that had happened and how great her day had been. And that's, that's what that first week is about, you know? The joy comes from more than just a new backpack or the school supplies, although my children would argue that that brings them very much joy, shopping for all of that on the list. But it's about, it's a result of the caring staff who go out of their way to make the kids feel welcome and safe from the moment that they step foot on our campuses. So I want to thank every teacher and classified staff member, administrator, for making that first week of school such a success for all of our students. Whether you're greeting students at the gate or serving lunch, answering phones, or leading a lesson, your efforts matter and you are creating positive first impressions and setting the tone for the entire school year. But I also want to thank our families for partnering with us. And I know the beginning of a school year is very busy between all the forms that get sent home to be filled out, drop-offs, pickups, and after-school schedules. But your support as a family makes a difference for your children and for our schools as a whole. We have so much to look forward to and I'm confident that focusing on our shared commitment to our students, much like Ms. Akpara said, will make this a very successful year of growth, opportunity, and pride for our district. Thank you.
All right, well, it's a lot of great comments from the ladies to my left. I don't think there's much left to say. I'm going to pass off to Trang for your comments for tonight.
Yeah. Consistent with what everybody else said, we had a wonderful startup. I enjoyed greeting families and supporting students, whether it was getting to their first period or to their classroom. I can only make three startups because of the flights of our school district, but I did start at Granny Hills High School and was at the gate, yep. Cheerleaders, yeah, Ms. Hunt had the cheerleaders out there and the link crew was out there and students were just engaged and you can tell by their eyes. They're scanning either to find their friends or they're scanning because they don't know what they're gonna do. And you can tell the difference if you pay attention. And so I always approach the kids that are scanning because they don't know what to do. And it makes my day and fills my cup as well and me to just, like you said. Then I moved on to, next one would have been Vanguard and was at the gate greeting and finding littles that didn't have families that were necessarily walking them to class, got some to class. And then my last school was Rio Vista with the new principal, Lindsay Bales. Just phenomenal time. But then I get to every other school in the district. So I hit all thirteen, fourteen, including Ava here, Adult Head fifteen. I mean, we get through it. Stop at Transportation, Nutrition Services, and Maintenance and Operations. And the guys always say they're not sure how I do it. There's probably a tunnel underground that I get through, but it's doable. And then I finished at Sitting Bull for exit because it's our largest K-8 and exit is atrocious on the first few weeks of school. So I was no help there, but I did stand and try to provide shade to some of the shorter people that were on the other side of me. I did. They'll tell you out by the bus, I did put my arms up and try. The other thing that I, since our last board meeting, we did have students who participated in the Skills USA National Competition. I will provide the board the list of winners and what places they did, but I would like to talk about the top places. We did have bronze by Evan Downing in EMT. We had a bronze of Nolan Qualls in EMT, a bronze Ariella Galvane in Practical Nursing, a silver for Mechatronics, Justin Velenko, sorry, that's wrong, Velenko, and Michael Poindexter. And I have to say that that silver is something to be recognized because that was a backup team to go. And for them to go to national competition and take silver is something of just an incredible feat. And then Emily Martinez was our gold place winner this year in Prepared Speech. And I say this year as if we do this every year. We don't have a gold place every year. In fact, I thought it might be our first-place gold ever and Mr. Schlosser told me that's not correct. It's been quite some time ago, but we did have a gold place. I just say that because what a wonderful outcome. And these students commit lots of time and energy, as do their teachers that go along with them and the people that just go to chaperone and make sure that they're supported. Also, on a different note, talking about safety and belonging. At your seat, I've provided a letter that will go out to families this Friday. It'll go to all of our families in Apple Valley Unified School District. It clarifies our expectation as a district that any words which are considered derogatory, discriminatory, or hate speech will not be tolerated. We often, we are put in place as administrators, teachers, classified staff, to defend and discuss whether it's okay for this group or that group. There's no discussion. Like, we just need to be done with having any discussion about this. And so we are hopeful that our families will partner with us. This includes steps that will be taken that are structured and appropriate in response. It will take into consideration age and whether it's a repeated consequence or what we're going to do. But I did want you to be aware of it. Teachers and staff in the district will get it prior to it hitting families so that they have awareness as well. And it does matter for a belonging and to set the standard and have the expectation. And then at the next board meeting in September, the Academy of Academic Excellence will be here presenting for this, the background about the charter and information that we've asked them to provide. So, that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to reports and first up is California School Employees Association, J.C. Scott.
Good evening. President Sabres, members of the board, Superintendent Nelson, district cabinet, avowed colleagues, committee members, and of course, my brothers and sisters of California School Employees Association, Chapter Eight, Twenty-Eight. I want to take a moment tonight to follow up my previous remarks. While my last speech carried urgency and directness because the issues we face are serious, I also want to speak from a place of partnership and shared purpose. Our district is facing challenges, yes, but we also have opportunities. Opportunities to rebuild trust, to work collaboratively, and to show our community that we are united in serving students and supporting staff. I believe that all of us, whether we sit on the board, serve in administration, or work in our schools every day, came here because we care deeply about the people, students, and the future of Apple Valley Unified. CSEA's priorities remain clear: fiscal responsibility and transparency, safety and accountability for all employees, ethical leadership at entry level, respectful, good-faith negotiation with labor partners. I want to emphasize, these are not demands meant to divide us. They are goals that, when achieved, will strengthen the entire district. They're not union goals or district goals, they are community goals. Because when classified staff are supported, when teachers feel safe, when administrators have trust from their teams, our students are the ultimate winners. Negotiations should never feel like a battlefield. There should be a table where all voices are heard, where ideas are exchanged, and where solutions are built together. I understand that tensions sometimes run high and perspectives differ, but the measures of leadership is not whether we avoid disagreements, it's how we handle them when they come. We can disagree without being disagreeable. We can challenge one another while still showing respect. This is how we set the example for our students: by demonstrating what productive dialogue looks like. The California School Employee Association is committed to doing our part. We will continue to advocate passionately, but also listen openly. We will hold firm to our principles, but we will also seek common ground whenever possible. And I truly hope we can move forward with a spirit of cooperation rather than conflict. If we succeed, the benefits will be felt far beyond this room, in our classrooms, in our staff rooms, and in the homes of every family in our school district. Students will see the adults modeling collaboration. Staff will feel secure in knowing that they are heard. And the community will be reassured that we are using our time and resources for the right reasons. So let us not waste this school year with politics, posturing, or mistrust. Let us invest in solutions, relationships, and results. Let us leave this year knowing we built something together and not tore it apart. The future of our district and the well-being of those who serve it depend on it. Thank you, and in solidarity, J.C. Scott.
Okay, up next is AVUDA, Karen Sabres.
Seems there's a thing going on here tonight. Good evening, Superintendent Nelson, board members. I apologize, I didn't acknowledge you earlier, cabinet. Oh, I thank you. Okay. Audience and community, you can hear me now. My name is Karen Sabres and I'm the president of AVUDA. And I want to start by saying, welcome back. I hope everyone had a chance to rest and enjoy their summer. As we kick off the new school year, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge all the people who helped make the first days back run smoothly: the teachers, the counselors, speech and language pathologists, certified, or classified staff, and our site and district leadership. It really does take everyone working together and we see those efforts. We all know the first few weeks of school don't just fall into place. I know how many, I know how many people spent extra hours on their own time setting up classrooms, prepping lessons, organizing events, troubleshooting tech, supporting families, and helping students feel excited to return, and we appreciate that. AVUDA was lucky enough to spend a half-day with our new teachers and I just want to say how thrilled we are to welcome them to ABUSD. Thank you, Ms. Akpara and Ms. Tucker for attending and speaking at our luncheon. I even got to help one of them set up their classroom and it reminded me quickly how expensive that can be. How many educators spend out-of-pocket just to create a welcoming and functioning space for their students. And that's hard. It's hard knowing people are spending their own money when they are, when they already aren't making enough just to give their students the best they can. And they do it because they care, but it shouldn't be the expectation. This brings me, this brings something that's been on my mind, especially after the June twelfth board meeting, which I was not here, but I did watch. And I was receiving text messages the whole time and honestly, other board members' meetings before and since. In the Board Governance Handbook, it outlines your roles and responsibilities as trustees. They include setting direction, establishing the structure, providing support, ensuring accountability, and serving as community leaders. Under the section about providing support, it talks about how board members are expected to act professionally, models the district's vision and values, make informed decisions based on shared goals, and help create a positive environment, work environment, for staff. It also states that the board members should be knowledgeable enough about district efforts to explain them to the public and should be actively listening to stakeholders. And that's where we're seeing a gap. Calls for transparency and accountability, along with meeting the responsibilities set forth in the Board's Governance Handbook, has been rebuffed at times with eye rolls, uncalled-for body language, side conversations, texting, and using unhelpful rhetoric that was seen by the audience and community and did not uphold the pillars of the district. The bottom line is this: you are the people up here, the adults up here, making the decisions that affect the lives of the staff and the students. When the board appears dismissive and divided, it makes people question whether the leadership is truly committed to being transparent and upholding accountability. We all want what is best for ABUSD. That's not in question. But how we get there and how we treat each other along the way matters just as much as the decisions being made. So as we begin the school year, we just want to ask that we recommit the standards this board has set forth for itself. Listen to and divided, it makes people question whether the leadership is truly committed to being transparent and upholding accountability. We all want what is best for AVUSD. That's not in question. But how we get there and how we treat each other along the way matters just as much as the decisions being made. So as we begin the school year, we just want to ask that we recommit the standards this board has set forth for itself. Listen to each other. Be honest where we are and how we move forward. And let's work together to make this year a strong one for the students, staff, and family of AVUSD. Thank you. In solidarity, Karen.
Okay, moving on to closed session reports. Clerk will read out. We have nothing to read out tonight. So we'll move to item seven, adoption of the agenda. The board may approve the agenda as is, or add or pull items from consent. So we'd need a motion to move the item?
I move.
Moved by Maria.
I'll second.
Second by Amanda. And we are trying out our new electronic voting here online. Popped up Kylie, good.
What you have is different.
That's not the agenda.
That's not the one. This is recognition of Adele.
Oh, that was a, I reckon.
Not progress.
Okay.
We will get it.
Hold on.
We will get it.
Good catch there.
It's like the first day of school when your technology doesn't work.
Okay. We will read out the vote here once. So we have two out of five so far, three out of five. Okay, four out of five. Okay, we got one more. Anita, have you got yours online yet?
I have.
Okay.
Is it green and it says it's recorded?
Okay.
Survey says. Maria, do you have yours open?
Any teachers in the class?
Right, this is how it rolls.
Renee, did you vote?
I did.
Okay, so you voted yes? Okay, so the motion passes unanimously.
Longshore was not recorded.
Okay. Okay. So we'll move on to item D, recognition presentation. So we're going to recognize tonight Adele McLean and Blanca Rangel on the Adult Education Program Outstanding Representation for the District Core Values.
Maybe not. Hi, Adele. I'm going to read something, and then I'm going to talk about the Adult Head Program. "Apple Valley Unified School District's Adult Education Program was recently recognized as a model program by California Adult Education Program," which in parentheses is CAPE. That's why we refer to it. Adele tells me to get on CAPE and approve things. So when I read it out, it doesn't sound right, because it's not called, it's not on this paper as CAPE. "The application focused on a strong partnership with local industry and the job-ready skills development program in health care available to adults in our community. We are so proud of the outcomes that the team at Apple Valley Adult Education achieves." Before I finish with Adele, like, I'm going to move on to Blanca, who is not here but is watching. She had a prior commitment. Blanca Rangel is, will receive the California Adult Education Student Succeed Project Award from the Outreach and Technical Assistant Network next month. Blanca has shown incredible perseverance. She began attending classes at Apple Valley Adult Education in 2018. She faced many hurdles during her time there, but overcame them and graduated in 2022. She is now a proctor in the AVUSD Transportation Department. She continues to take advantage of the workshops and classes that Apple Valley Adult Education has to offer. We are lucky to have Blanca be part of our AVUSD family. Now, not what's not written. There is not a time that Adele is not there to support adults in this community and outside of our community. I was at the Adult Education graduation, which Ms. Hunt is just going to keep getting called out about tonight, in the spring, having to do with healthcare. And so the programs that really do impact a group of people that don't think they're ever going to make it with a diploma or a GED are the people that walk through and graduate from adult education. And while the door says that if you are out of dress code, it's an inside joke, but it's really a post on her building, that if you're not in dress code, they won't serve you, I would disagree with that. I think that if somebody walked in not appropriately dressed, Adele would figure out how to support them and get them what the services they need are. There are a new number of staff members in this district now who have come through the Adult Head Program, have worked in the Adult Head Program, and have supported adults in this community and beyond. And it is a legacy that she has developed and will lead and will continue to, as long as we hope she'll keep doing the work. Adult Education went away for a while in this, in this district, along with the entire state of California. And when it came back, it came back stronger than ever. And it's because of Adele and her commitment and her love for the people that she sees every single day. So, Adele, thank you.
All right. So we'll move on to discussion information item. First one is California School Boards Association Options for Government Consulting Services. And that will be presented by Trin Nelson.
The board had requested some information regarding California School Boards Association and the different programs that they offer. As members and continued membership, that's on the consent agenda, obviously, tonight for the board. They do offer Good Beginnings, which support boards when there is any change to a board, and gives time for the board to come together as a group. And they also offer Governance Handbook training, as well as the others that we've listed. So it's totally up to the board to give me direction as a group as to whether we're going to bring back a consultant agreement in the September board meeting.
What's the cost?
Thirty-seven hundred dollars per training.
What's that going to add up to average on a year?
Well, it depends. If you were to do one training, it's thirty-seven hundred dollars plus the cost of lodging and travel for whoever the consultant is. If we get a consultant from Riverside, which I can't guarantee, because they come from all over the state. So it's, if you bundle and do more than one, if you do three, you get a 10% break. So there's not an exact dollar amount, because it's just, you have to wait until you know where the consultant's coming from.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions about it? Anita, we'll start down there with you. Renee?
Just a quick question. Were we, are we considering all three? Are we considering less?
That's why it's a discussion information item for you guys to give some direction.
Oh, okay. Because I know we were looking at board evaluations. I was just wondering if it's thirty-seven hundred per?
Yes, it is.
Good to go.
Maria? Was that it, Renee? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm just saying. So for each one, it would be thirty-seven hundred?
That's correct. Plus whatever the lodging of, and whoever the consultant is for their time, trouble.
So if we were to use them, though, we would, just because we have them on, we approve it, we would still have a board item later on to approve the thirty-seven hundred when we were going to have the training?
Yeah. Actually, what you would do is give me direction to bring back whatever consultant agreement you would like. So if you want to start with one, and then make a decision as to whether you want to move on to the next one, that would be fine as well.
My concern is basically the costs. I mean, we're trying to tighten our belts, because we've had a lot of talk about budgets and deficits and that, but I'm just throwing that out there. So, Maria?
Well, when I read this the first time, I felt that this is essential to build a cohesive working environment between the trustees. However, it would be a better idea to plan ahead, to use it when we have new trustees, and the first six months upon arrival, then they can do the new beginning. Because giving them the training before they have had their feet in the, in the system and understand how the board runs, it's almost like it defeats it, because they don't know the steps or the conditions or the board policies that we have in Apple Valley. But after they have tried it for the first six months of being on the board, then, that is, six months after they've taken the oath of office, then they should be able to now have the opportunity to do the new beginnings with the sitting board members. Because the sitting board members may have habits that they are accustomed to, and the new board members will like to either go on board with the old habits or to try and change those habits. Also, that the CEO, that happens to be superintendent, should meet with the new members with current board president to review expected standards as soon as they are verified through the register of voters. I don't see why we cannot keep it, even if it means to have it just one time. Each, each time we have new trustees, to have it just one time and have all the trustees to come to that same meeting, so that we're all speaking the same vernacular. That's all I have.
Amanda?
Do they have a recommendation of how many sessions they usually recommend?
This is what they gave me. Because of your Governance Handbook, it does include an expectation of a governance self-evaluation, a board self-evaluation. We did not do one in the spring, and it was moved to this year. And so we can do it without CSBA involved. We have the ability to do a self-evaluation without it. But their recommendation is in the order that they are listed. Good Beginnings Workshop. If you don't have a Governance Handbook, then the Governance Handbook. You do have a Governance Handbook, so you may not need an entire day of training.
Okay, it's a pleasure of the board. I believe Maria wants to move it forward or give direction to keep them?
I, I think we need to hold it, hold it as a place saver, until we know for sure how much we have as a district. Because instead of expending the money or having the money out there, because it's still a discussion, but not to throw it out all the way, but save it until we know how much we have as a district, after we've covered the personnel that we have.
Yeah, I agree. So that would be the direction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to public comments. Item F, Kylie, you have some cards?
We do. We have three this evening.
Okay. So as provided by public comments card, speakers are requested to limit to three minutes. If more than one person wishes to speak on the same topic, it's 20. But we have three here. So if you can just limit it to three minutes. First up is Shane.
Good evening. My name is Shane Churchill. For those of you who don't know me, I am a choir teacher and union rep at Granite Hills High School. And I just wanted to take this time to thank my, both my certificated and my classified colleagues for attending tonight's meeting. And I was also asked by more than a few other colleagues to apologize on behalf of them for not being able to make it, for the sheer fact that they're working a second, and in one person's case, a third job, just to supplement their income enough to make ends meet. And here's hoping that in the near future, that won't necessarily be the case for these people who give so much of themselves to our Apple Valley Unified students. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment, Shane. Up next is Javier.
Thank you so much, board and cabinet. And again, I just want to reiterate many of the comments that have already been said here by any of the staff. And Renee, I wanted to say thank you so much for, for speaking up and the words that you have expressed. I share your sentiment. My name is Javier Alcántara Rojas. I am the director of the Great Academy and instrumental music teacher at Granite Hills High School. Tonight, I stand before you not just as an educator, but as someone increasingly alarmed by the direction the district is heading. We are working without a contract. We have been told that there is no money, not even for a cost of living adjustment. At a time when inflation continues to climb and surrounding districts are increasing pay, we are now among the lowest-paid districts in the high desert. Torona, Baker, Silver Valley, and Needles are below us. Lucerne, Helendale, and Snowline are ahead of us. This is, morale is low, burnout is high. That's not a coincidence. It's a direct result of leadership choices. I have worked in this district now for 10 years, and I remember a time when we had leadership that would come and speak with, with teachers, would ask our opinion, would hold it in high regard. I don't think I would probably come here as many times as I have without receiving any kind of response. I don't think that would have existed prior. This year, I have personally experienced a pattern of poor communication, violation of district procedure, and failure to adhere to administrative regulations that I'm currently in dialogue with. And I hope to receive a response soon on those definitions that I've already emailed administration. I've been blindsided by allegations that could have been easily resolved through professional dialogue if the district had simply followed AR 1312.1. It's deeply concerning that these, those of us who advocate for the arts, for equity, for innovation, and for the well-being of our students and staff are not met with support, but with resistance, isolation, and suspicion. When policy is ignored, when due process is optional, and when educators are treated as disposable, the result is not just burnout, it's a breaking point. Our students deserve better. Our staff deserves better. Our community deserves a district that honors its own policies, invests in its teachers, and values integrity over expedience. I call on this board to please follow up with my email regarding AR 1312.1, prioritize transparency and accountability in all investigations, and immediately address the contract and compensation crisis affecting our teachers. I am still here because I believe in our students and our programs. But belief alone cannot sustain a system that refuses to support the people who serve it. Thank you very much.
Javier, thank you for your comments. I believe the next speaker is, is it Seon Peak? Did I say it right? I'm sorry.
Good evening, esteemed board members, Superintendent Nelson.
Good evening, esteemed board members. Superintendent Nelson, my name is Keon Peak. I'm the fifth boy of a lifelong AVUSD family. Four have graduated from Granite Hills, and I'm a junior there. I come to you this evening and will continue until I see change. We stand at a crossroads between educational policy and adolescent health. California has advanced a new law requiring school districts to restrict student smartphone use by July 1, 2026, a commendable step towards reducing distractions and protecting mental health. We are seeing this already being implemented in this school year. Yet frustratingly, the state's pioneering 2019 law mandating later school start times designed to align school schedules with teen biology remains unutilized. The new legislation directs districts to establish rules limiting smartphone use during school hours. Supporters argue this will enhance school, classroom focus and curb harmful social media impacts. However, there is worry about added burdens on teachers and potential challenges for emergency communication. And California's 2019 law requires middle schools to begin no earlier than 8:00 AM and high schools to start no earlier than 8:30 AM, with full compliance due by July 1, 2022. Although inflammation has occurred in many districts, such as like Lucerne, AVUSD is not compliant and is delaying the public health benefits long associated with later starting times. I ask you, why does this matter? Because teenagers are biologically wired for later bedtimes and wake times. Their circadian rhythm shift during puberty causing later release of melatonin, making early mornings especially grueling. When Newsom passed Bill 3,281, Senator Anthony Portantino said in a statement, "Today, Governor Newsom displayed a heartwarming and discerning understanding of the importance of objective research and exercised strong leadership," as he put, "our children's health and welfare ahead of institutional bureaucracy resistant to change." Rebutts have come from communities because of potential need. No one knows exactly how families will be impacted, but there have been numerous studies and research to show how students will be. A systematic review found that delays of 25 to 60 minutes in start times led to 25 to 77 minutes more sleep per weeknight, along with reduced, reduced daytime sleepiness, lower depression, less tardiness, and decreased caffeine use. Another review covering 38 studies linked with later start times with increased sleep, better attendance, fewer tardies, improved grades, and fewer teen driving accidents, which is a big concern of mine as a new license driver. The extra sleep is especially more beneficial in teen males, even 35, 30 to 45 more minutes. My own brother researched and did many reports in high school and college. He graduated Granite in 2015. So here's the paradox. California is practically limiting smartphones to sharpen focus and safeguard mental health, and AVUSD jumps on that a whole year before it is due to be implemented. But the single best structural lever to improve teen well-being, later school start times, is not. I've heard that it's a rule issue, which I, could have fooled me because in my seven-mile drive to Granite, I passed by an Old Navy, a Target, a Walmart, which don't really seem ruled to me. And I've heard it's a busing issue. Shouldn't that be addressed and settled for the sake of the children and your district's well-being? When teens are given the sleep their bodies demand, they arrive sharper, healthier, and more emotionally resilient. We should champion both initiatives, but especially prioritize enforcing the start time law, because you can ban distractions, but only sleep can truly reboot the teenage brain. Thank you.
Well, I'm impressed. We don't get many student speakers, and if we do, they sure don't speak as well as you do. So good job. Good to be an advocate for what you believe in. So keep up the good work. Okay. Move on. Is there, was that, is the three cards in, Kylie? Okay. So we can move on again to board member comments. Does any of the board members have any more comments? Anita?
I just want to say thank you for the gentleman who spoke, and especially Keenan. Thank you. You did a great job. We heard you.
Renee?
Just want to echo. Thank you for everyone, everyone who stood today and spoken. We appreciate you bringing your concerns to us.
Maria?
Keep coming. Thank you.
Amanda?
I think they got it all, but yeah, thank you.
Okay. Renee, anything else? Okay, we have no public hearings, special meeting none at this, discussion session, and just the following items. Okay, we'll move on to approve the recommendation of the administrating hearing chairperson effective immediately on annual review case AR 1202526. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Maria, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Amanda. All right, we'll go ahead and vote on that.
Okay, so for this one, um, due to the potential of a possible readout, I don't have them broken down to be able to do individually, just to allow you guys the ability to review each one at a time. It is on my question for CSB of how we can structure that another time.
Okay, so let's do a roll call vote then on that.
Where are we voting on?
Tucker?
Which one is it?
Anita, you just, yes or no?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Longshore?
Aye.
Oparra?
Aye.
Buchanan?
Aye.
Raleigh, I vote aye as well. Okay, annual review case AR 2202526, motion?
So moved.
Let's see, do we, let's see. Okay, so let's go do this, and we can just, can we do this all in one, instead of reading each one, just go, I can't, okay, AR, okay, so go AR 2, AR 3, AR 4, AR 5. That's it. So with that, we can do a roll call. So we'll need a motion on, what, 2 through 5?
So moved.
Motion.
I'll second.
Second, Longshore.
No, Maria.
Oh, Maria, I'm sorry. You guys also have the same down there. Okay. We'll go ahead. Renee?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. Okay, great, good job. Move through that. Consent calendar has recommended the board of trustees consider approving a number of agenda items as a consent list. So we have consent items.
I think we missed item I to the human resources report.
Oh, did we?
Yeah.
Go back. Oh, approve the certificated classified personal actions as listed. No? Oh, okay. All right, okay. Do we have a motion? Is this going to be electronic? Okay. Still need a motion, no?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All right, go ahead, and we'll vote when it shows up.
This is like so stressful. I don't know what it just said. There.
Oh.
It just doesn't.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
We can get really crazy.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, or the agenda item passes unanimously. Thank you, Kylie, for bringing it back around. So now we're back on J, which is consent, items 1 through 53, consent items. Does anybody have any discussion items on any of those?
I need to pull number 25.
25, Maria? Okay.
And I'd like to pull item number 51.
51, Longshore. Okay. Okay, so we can go ahead and move for approval on all but 25 and 51. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay.
Because there's one pulled from it, it won't take it, or the two pulled from it, it won't take it as.
Okay, we'll just hold off, and then we'll do a second motion. Okay, so item 25, who wants to?
I did. I'm pulling item 25. I will not be able to vote on this, on this item because I'm currently employed as an adjunct faculty at California State University.
Okay, so you're going to recuse yourself on this item from 25. Okay. Renee on 51?
Yes, so I had a question regarding consent agenda, item number 51, Williams lawsuit settlement. I know as the, this is in reference to the uniform complaint report, but I am just curious, thinking forward in regards to qualified teachers. How many new teachers attended the new teacher training, if we have those numbers? And then of those, how many would be considered unqualified by the Williams lawsuit settlement?
Of only the new teachers that attended the training?
Yes. So how many new teachers attended the new training?
Okay.
And then of those, how many would be considered unqualified by the Williams lawsuit settlement?
I can't answer the qualification because that comes through our reporting to the county of credentialing, and then it goes to the state, and then we get it. You'll see it on the SARC annually, and it's always a year behind. So we can't make assumptions about anybody's credential and what their qualification and what it would, what it would do. As far as the number of people that attended, I'll have to get that for you because there were multiple days. Do you want the each day broken down as to who attended, or do you want it as a sum total of? Just a sum total.
Because everybody, everybody didn't attend every day.
Yes.
They had other things going, so.
Yes, that would be great. So yes, just a sum total would be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else on that, Renee?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, so we have item 25 and 51. We'll need a motion, and Maria Oparra will recuse herself on 25. So do we?
Not sure we voted on.
You didn't.
Oh, we're going to add that back in through the consent. Yeah, so we'll go ahead and just remove that. So we'll go ahead and vote 1 through 53, with Maria abstaining from, or recusing from 25.
Do you just want to do 25 separate?
Yes.
Why don't we do a motion?
Okay.
And a second for item 25, and then you guys could do the rest.
I move that we approve items number 1 through 53, except for item number 25.
So, second.
Who, who did the?
I did the motion.
Amanda.
And Anita, second.
And then you guys will have to do a roll call vote for that, and then 25 you'll be able to do separately as it will be different.
Okay, so we'll have a roll call vote. So we'll go with Anita?
Aye.
Renee?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
No.
That's 25.
25 is not, 25 is not this one.
The motion is for 1 through 50, except for 25.
Okay.
So I can vote.
Okay. There's a lot of numbers there. Maria, you vote?
Aye.
Okay, there we go. Motion, or the agenda item passes unanimously. Now we'll go to 25. We vote electronically.
Yes.
Okay.
Once we get a motion and a second for that one.
Okay.
I move we approve item number 25 on the consent agenda.
All right.
Second.
Okay, did you catch that?
Mm-hmm.
I did the recuse. We're going to put it back.
I can change it for you. You would like your vote to be abstained, for you?
I did abstain. I did recuse. I should make it recuse.
I'm just like.
I did recuse.
Did it, did it get reflected in there?
All right, so that brings us to item 51 now, right?
No, 51 was captured in 1 through 53.
Okay, so we're good then?
Yep, you're good.
Okay, good, good job. Okay. Okay. Bear with us, we're getting there. All right, so, right, move from consent.
No closed?
No closed session. Closing items, so we'll go ahead and, future items, does any members of the board have any items for the future? I would like to add one for future, possibly on start times for our board meetings. And it seems that we run late at night, maybe we could, you know, start a little earlier, get the closed session done earlier in the day, and then start meetings earlier. But that, we'll discuss it because I know some of you work, and some of you have conflicts of schedules, but I like to agendize anyway. Everybody agree with that? Have discussion on start times?
Actually, I had, I was trying to make sure that we, as a board, that we actually take the time to look at our board bylaw 9323. And it addresses things like that. But 92, 9323 bylaw, we need to keep in mind that the personnel that sits here at our board meetings, they do have to go back to work before a long day.
And that's, that was one of the reasons I brought this.
We need to revisit how long we stay at every board meeting so that we can excuse them to return to work.
All right, well, it'll be on the future agenda.
Yes.
And then, does anybody else have any items they'd like to, Renee?
Yes, I do. I would like to ask the board to consider looking at the board policy 5116.1, which is intra-district transfers. I was hoping you could look at it as a board and just give me some feedback on it. I know it's up for consideration as of May of this year. I believe it was May 4th, off the top of my head, but I'm not sure. So I was just hoping for some feedback on your thoughts on that. And then I have one more. Are we good? Did anybody have any questions on that one?
We can agendize it, future.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, thank you. And then I would also like to thank Superintendent Nelson for providing the number of retirees receiving 100% employee, employer-paid health benefits at the June 12th board meeting. I wanted to also take a moment to clarify that I was asking for this data on all employees, both retired and current. I know it was summer break, and you hopefully enjoyed the, that time off, you know, it's well deserved for sure. So I was just hoping to come back to it and see if we can get the remainder of the data, and when that might be feasible.
Does that need to be agendized, or can you just report that?
I can just reply.
Yeah, we don't need to agendize it, Renee. Just send it to us via email.
Okay, yes, that would be great.
So for clarification, I thought we were anybody that had been retired and had full benefits. Now you're asking for anybody that is, you have the retired group, we sent that out. You want anybody else that's left?
Yes. So at the time, I had asked for retired and current of all employees receiving 100% employee paid, employer-paid health benefits.
Okay, I'm sorry that we missed that.
No, that's okay.
We thought it was retired, so.
Yeah, no, that's okay. That's why I just want to make sure I follow up on it. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, I think that's it. So that moves us over for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
Need a electronic vote on that, Kylie?
Yeah, I was.
She has a computer.